My name is Mayor.
I got deposed by the DCI, by the Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 1st Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Tamara.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Here.
McCurus.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Baranko.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
All right. With us to give our invocation tonight is Pastor Erica Varca with the Table Ministry. So in case you don't wonder how this works, people can sign up to give invocations, different people in the community of all faiths. And Erica just serves as our pinch hitter when someone cancels. So she doesn't have a regular schedule. We're just like, oh, shoot, someone canceled today, can you show up? So thank you for being on call for us to give invocations once in a while. So I'd ask you to stand for her invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
So I can only imagine a little bit what you guys go through because I told a couple of friends I was coming and they brought me a whole bunch of things to bring on the agenda, number one being switch Halloween. So I told them that it would fit perfectly with something I wanted to share, that a quote I came across, "If a fellow isn't thankful for what he's got, he isn't likely to be thankful what he's going to get." And sometimes we all fail to notice what is right in front of us. We are so busy hustling to the next thing, trying to please the next person, that we miss the good, important things that are happening right now. We miss the impact that our long hours and hard work are making. We're so focused on the big picture that we miss all the little, beautiful ripples. So we, as a city, people sitting up here may not always agree. We divide and point fingers. Anyone who scrolls through social media sees that. It's easy to blame. So tonight, I'm really going to pray over all of you, the ability to stop and notice. All of you sitting here, the people that show up and care and are determined through the good and the bad to serve our city. So all of you, in this season of gratitude, we say thank you for what we have in this beautiful city, right here, right now. So let us pray. Dear Father, tonight we pray for the leaders in this room. We look to You for blessing and guidance. Let every leader resist temptation to pursue their own interests, but to look at the interest of others. Help them to lead with a heart to serve You. Help them to lead with fair wisdom and gentle understanding. Help them to work in humility. We pray for them, that they do not grow weary. Give them Your strength. So tonight, we ask you to cover them, our city leaders and our mayors, with Your grace and mercy, and remind them each and every day of Your faithfulness and Your goodness. In Your Son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Erica, for leading our invocation tonight. We'll move on to item four, consent agenda approval. Any changes there, council?
Move approval.
Second.
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve that. Any discussion? All right. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to 18, our regular agenda. Look for a motion there, please.
For approval, Jensen. Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that? Was there some items you wanted to rearrange? Counselor Nitzer?
Yes. I will make a motion to amend by placing item 60 immediately after item 55.
Second, Cole.
All right. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Cole on that. Any discussion? All right. Let's vote on that motion, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Any other changes to be made? Counselor Nitzer?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by separating items 19 through 48 into six distinct groups for consideration by the council in the following order. First, items 19, 21, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 31, 33, 35, 37, 39, 41, 43, 45, and 47. Second, items 20 and 22. Third, items 26, 28, 30, and 32. Fourth, items 34, 36, and 38. Fifth, items 40, 42, 44, 46. And last, item 48.
Second, Cole.
All right. Sure about that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Cole. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Counselor Nitzer.
Just so the audience knows what I'm doing here, we're splitting it so that we address all of the alcohol requests first, and then we're going to deal with each of the video lottery requests, splitting them up by individual establishments so they can be considered separately.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All right. Let's take a vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
All right. That's going to pass eight to zero. Before we move on tonight, just want to review how public input works at our meetings here. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input will be limited to five minutes. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item that's under consideration at that time only. So with that being said, we'll move on to our unfinished business here.
Okay. Item 19, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, 4655 East 57th Street, Suite 100. Item 21, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, 4655 East 57th Street, Suite 200. Item 23, new 2022 retail wine license for Oh My Cupcakes, 3326 East 10th Street. Item 24, transfer of 2022 packaged liquor license from Wolfies Liquor, 6811 South Louise Avenue, to Credo's Pub, 5520 West Success Street, Suite 100. Item 25, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 101. Item 27, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 102. Item 29, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 103. Item 31, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 104. Item 33, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 101. Item 35, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 102. Item 37, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 103. Item 39, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anecia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 101. Item 41, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anecia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 102. Item 43, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anecia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 103. Item 45, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anecia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 104. Item 47, new 2023-23 retail malt beverage license for Kingsmart, 4200 West 41st Street.
All right. Hi, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I know many of the applicants are present in the audience if you have questions for them.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on those items that we just read into the record? Counsel, you got any questions on any of these items here? Counselor Nitzer?
I'll make a motion to approve items 19, 21, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 31, 33, 35, 37, 39, 41, 43, 45, and 47.
Second, Cole.
All right. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there, council? Counselor Nitzer?
Again, just so the audience understands, alcohol licenses, we're allowed to consider suitable location, suitable person, and then there's a third one that's rarely used. I don't think it's an issue in Sioux Falls, which is, I think you can deny if somebody has more than 50% of the licenses in the city, but that's not applicable here. So the considerations we have to issue alcohol licenses are different than video lottery. So these were handling first.
All right. Any other discussion there? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Move on to the next batch of items here, then.
Item 20, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, 4655 East 57th Street, Suite 100. Moved by amendment. Item 22, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, 4655 East 57th Street, Suite 200. Moved by amendment.
All right. Jamie, on those two?
I would be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicants are present if you have questions for them.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on 20 or 22? Council, any questions on these? Counselor Nitzer?
I have a few questions for the applicant, and I'm going to ask the same questions of each applicant, just to get a few things on record, and then, so. Welcome back, Mr. Duncan.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Drew Duncan. I'm here on behalf of Commonwealth Gaming.
Thank you. So first question, what type of business is this going to be? A casino, bar, restaurant, or other?
It's going to be a video lottery establishment with bar.
Okay. How many total machines will be in the facilities together?
10 in each establishment.
Okay. Will alcohol be sold or at no charge?
I don't know that that's been clarified yet in this particular establishment. We plan to operate in accordance with the rules set by the South Dakota Lottery and the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay. And then, do you know how much space will be dedicated to bar seating versus space dedicated to seating for video lottery machines?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant while we got him? All right. Thank you, sir. All right, council. Look for a motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve items 20 and 22.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Jensen. Is there discussion, council, on this one? Counselor Nitzer?
Based on what I've heard and past experience with these businesses, my vote is based on, and this is quasi-judicial, so I need to state my reasoning, is based on SDCL 427864 Sub 3, the type of business and manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it. SDCL 427837.1 requires an establishment with a beer/wine license to meet the definition of a bar or lounge to qualify for video lottery, which means it primarily needs to be in the business of selling alcohol. I don't believe this applicant meets that definition, and based on state law and my oath to uphold it, I have to vote no. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, council. Other discussion on this one? All right. We have a motion and a second, so let's take a vote, then.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Nitzer.
No.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
No.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
No.
All right. That item is going to pass, five to three. 26, 28, 30, and 32, please.
Item 26, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 101. Moved by amendment. Item 28, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 102. Moved by amendment. Item 30, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 103. Moved by amendment. Item 32, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for ASAVP LLC, 1720 North Louise Avenue, Suite 104. Moved by amendment.
Jamie.
Good evening. The applicant for these four items is Vikash Patel, and I believe he's in the audience if you have questions for him.
All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public want to speak on 26, 28, 30, or 32? Come on up.
Good evening. Everyone, my name is Vikash Patel. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the applicant here? Counselor Nitzer?
Same questions. What type of business will this be? A casino, bar, or a restaurant?
A bar casino.
Okay. How many machines total do you plan to have?
I plan to, I would like to get 40, but I'm okay with 30, and then there's an explanation as to why I think 30 is a sweet spot number. Over the years, when this video lottery started, we only had sort of two or three different machines. As time has passed on, there is more than 14 or 15 different types of machines that are available in the market. And to stay competitive with the existing casinos that are already in excess of 30 or 40, we have to offer more than one or two machines. Based on our business trend, we're trying to figure out, and we figured it out, to when there's a machine A being used, and if there's only one type of that machine A, and if we have two customers that wants to play the same machine, how do we tackle that issue? So my theory and my study says that just because having 40 machines doesn't necessarily bring you more business opposed to having 30 machines. It just gives the opportunity for the patron that's coming to visit our establishment to play the machine of their choice. So it's not necessarily increasing the business. I could see if it was 50, 60, 70, 100 machines, that's a different story, but with 30 machines, we're barely able to put more than two to two and a half machines of each kind in that establishment. And henceforth, I would like to request at least 30 machines, so it gives a variety. Even my existing casino that we have right now, it's a 30-machine casino, but we don't have 30 machines in there, because I'm able to fit everything that I need, more than two casinos, less than three casinos. So 30 always is, I think, works pretty well. 40, I've seen quite a few 40s and 50s approved in the past. So if we want to be fair, then I think 30 or 40 should be the number.
All right. Another question?
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah.
Will alcohol be sold or provided at no charge?
It depends on the demographics. So in the beginning, we will be selling them correct, but to stay competitive, depending on what the neighborhood casinos are doing, we follow the trend.
And then, the space in the establishment, how much of the space will be video lottery machines versus dedicated?
There is always some space allotted for someone to just sit there and enjoy a beverage, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant while we have him here? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Mr. Patel, you realize the legislature only allows us to grant you 10. When you say you're going to have a 30 or 40, I mean, that puts us in a really bad spot when you say that publicly. I appreciate you being honest with us this evening. Other applicants are happy to tell us they're only doing 10 in their separate businesses.
10 per suite, yes.
Right, but not per building. So I appreciate the honesty that we're trying to put together.
So let me retract my statement. What I'm trying to say is, per license, I'm looking for 10.
Right, but you want, you need 40 in one location, in one building, and you're breaking up the building into suites. You've probably been the first one, and I appreciate the honesty that's come before us to tell us what they're actually trying to accomplish and why it's important.
Sure.
Or why, for your business model to work, you need a larger casino than what the legislature allows.
I think every business model needs some sort of competitive edge. What we see in the market is what I'm following. Maybe my way of putting things might be a bit unorthodox, but the end result, I believe, is what it is.
Well, I appreciate honesty. It's never unorthodox to tell us what you're trying to accomplish, and you understand where I'm coming from, or at least where I'll be coming from, that that's not the intent of the legislature to allow you to have 40. I want you to go to the legislature, to the people who are actually making the rules for this, and tell them to do that, or to expand the betting amount, or the max bet amount, or the other things that I think your industry needs to continue to be successful. Trying to keep it limited to 10 machines may or may not work, but in my mind, this goes against what the...
I think you're sort of using the words to your advantage here. Starr, what I'm trying to say is, I'm following the same suit as everyone else. I'm not reinventing anything here, or I'm not reinventing any literature. So with all due respect, it's Suite 102, 103, and 101. Thank you.
Other questions here for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Look for a motion on this one.
Motion to approve items 26 and 28.
Okay. We have a second for that?
Second.
Starr.
All right. Counselor McCurus, you want to...
I'm asking for approval of two to be consistent with the 2019 ordinance that was previously approved by the council. I believe that's in alignment with the legislative intent of the 2019 ordinance of two suites operating next to each other. I do intend, next Tuesday, to bring to this body, if there is support, that we would update the 2019 ordinance that would allow for three malt beverage licenses, and then obviously, a liquor license could be added to that as well to make it four. But I believe to be consistent with how I voted previously and with the intent of the 2019 ordinance, I believe we need to approve two and to adjust the 2019 ordinance to clarify moving forward. So I'll be supporting the approval of two, not the approval of four.
All right. Thank you, council. Discussion on this motion? Counselor Nitzer?
So I'll just, I'm going to vote the same way, based on the same reasoning. I won't read it all again, but 427837.1, whether it's defined, whether the establishment is a bar or lounge. And I do want to say, I've had great conversations with Vic, incredibly straight shooter, been very, very honest with me, and he's just trying to compete, good business, good businessperson. He's doing nothing different than everybody else in the industry is doing. He's doing all of what they're doing. And I'm going to echo what Counselor Starr said. The gripe isn't with me, the gripe is with the state legislature. I mean, yes, they're separate quote-unquote businesses, but the intent was 10, and there's been, I don't know if you want to call it a loophole or whatever, but we're now talking about, well, we'll do 20, 30, 40, and drawing some sort of line. Well, first of all, I would posit that none of these meet the criteria of a bar or lounge. So if I say that you're allowed two but not four, then I'm saying you can shoplift $200 but not $400. I don't think that's probably the way to go. And the other thing is, this whole thing with the separate businesses, we know it's, it's just frank, if you go in them, it's a fiction. I mean, I've even had one proprietor tell me straight out, "It's a 30-machine casino." I mean, come on. And the intent was 10. So the legislature, if they want to, they need to reflect the fact of what's happening on the ground, and they can change the law, but until then, I'm going to follow it.
Counselor Sale?
I have a question for a city attorney. Our items 26, 28, 30, and 32, does the council have the ability to approve all four of those applications?
Well, it depends. I mean, viability, I mean, per Counselor Nitzer's comment.
Would we be violating the ordinance if we passed, approved all of those, the current ordinance today?
Well, when you look at the continuum on this, right, and I'm going to separate your question into the two, right? You've got 26 and 28 for Counselor McCurus's comments. He's comfortable with that from a state law point of view. Counselor Nitzer does not, so you've got that continuum, right? If you look at it from a four point of view, you're going that much farther along the continuum in the risk when it comes to state law and the legislature and abiding by it as it exists. So you can see there are two philosophies there that differ in their interpretation. When you get to the four, again, it gets that much more strained.
Thank you. With that in mind, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion and include approval of items 30 and 32.
All right. We got a second for that? All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to amend the current motion to include those two. Any discussion on that? Counselor Starr? Go ahead. It was his motion first. Go ahead. You explain it, and then I'll vote.
Well, I just think if we, the rules are as they are today, and to say the intent of something that happened a few years ago, it's, I was here when that happened. So I think that these are the rules that the applicant is following, we should allow them to apply for all four of the licenses. If weeks down the road, we change the rules, that's a different story. But as it stands today, we do have the ability to approve all four of these. I don't know if we're going to, but we certainly have the ability to do that, so I'd like to consider all four of them at the same time. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Starr?
Yes, and to follow along with that, then potentially, we're going to cost this applicant all of the licenses that we could potentially vote against all four of them because it doesn't meet the intent. So I hope he's willing to face that, that it's all or nothing at this point. It's either all four or zero.
If the amendment passes.
Correct. Counselor McCurus?
Second question of clarification for Jamie or the city attorney, that they can reapply for two, three, or four after this, or how long do they have to wait to reapply if something wasn't to pass?
There is a timeline that kicks in, depending on how you're voting, what way you're voting There is a timeline that kicks in, depending on how you're voting, what way you're voting for it. If you're voting based on suitable person, I believe there's a certain timeline. It might be a year. I don't have that right in front of me at this time, but I believe it's a suitable location. It is three months, and it has to be a different location potentially.
Clarification?
Go ahead.
I was, my previous understanding, that was the malt beverage licensing, that wasn't the video lottery terminals? So is the wait period different between video lottery terminals denial and the malt beverage license denial? We've already approved the malt beverage license, but we haven't approved the video lottery terminals.
I suppose you could. What happens when you, with the application, is when you've approved the application, so that will get to the center of the state, and there's a question on there whether it's ineligible for video lottery. I would have to check that before I send it to the state, if you vote the video lottery down. Now, I don't know what the process is to bring that back. I suppose you could. We've never done that. I would have to check on that with the state, because I don't know what that process is. Because once I send that application as ineligible for video lottery, I don't know if that's able to, I would imagine it's able to change, but again, I've never been in the situation.
Other discussion on the motion?
There isn't anything that I know of that would prevent them from coming back.
So we got an amendment on the floor. Other discussion on that? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment, which is to approve twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-two collectively. Let's take a vote.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
No.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
No.
Baranco?
No.
Cole?
No.
All right, so that amendment is going to fail, five to three. We'll move on to our next item. Oh, excuse me, the amendment fails, so we're back to the, the amendment fails, so we're back to the original motion.
Twenty-six and twenty-eight.
Which is to approve twenty-six and twenty-eight. That was, we have a motion, a second on that, so is there a discussion on that? All right, no discussion there. Let's take a vote on that one, then, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, that one's going to pass, then, six to two. All right, we'll move on to thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, thirty-three, did you say? Oh, thirty and thirty-two. Because we, okay, so we have to take action on thirty and thirty-two now. Yes, thank you, city attorney. So I need a motion on those items, and then we'll move to thirty, on thirty and thirty-two.
Well, I guess my question, Mr. Mayor, is before we make a motion, I'm still not clear on, I want to make a motion to deny, but do I still need to do it in the affirmative and then vote against it? But which way, because the last clarification, I want to make sure that they can come back and appeal without having to wait a year, or whatever, we end up making a decision, a policy decision, in the next month or two. Do you know what I'm trying to ask? Which form does the motion need to be in so that it doesn't cost them having to wait a year, if it is denied?
Well, I'd welcome the city clerk's thoughts, but all the motions need to be in the affirmative, and so then you can vote against it. When it comes to the denial, it really comes back to what Jamie had referenced about where the state would be on the video lottery position.
So I agree that it should be in the affirmative. That's always a recommendation, but more to Counselor Star's point, if it was, if there was a motion to deny outright the two items, and that prevailed, then that side, I think what he's getting towards that side, if they prevail, they would be able to reconsider their denial. So it's one or the other.
Okay.
So in other words, if it's a motion to approve, and that is adopted, or that fails, for example, or it's adopted, then it could be reconsidered to perhaps deny it. If it's a motion to approve and it fails, then, actually, come to think of it, then they would be able to reconsider it anyway. So it really doesn't matter either way.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor? So wouldn't it make more sense to wait and get clarification from the state before and defer these two items? Maybe that's a philosophy question, rather than a, because we don't know what the answer is to the question of...
I did look in the, and the alcoholic beverage license is what, where that timeline comes into effect. I don't find anything quickly glancing, of course, on the lottery side that would prevent them from coming back. If you allow them to come back and you voted in, that would be fine.
Thank you. Counselor Baranco?
So just to clarify, with the, we just approved two. We didn't approve the other two. But we can either reconsider those denials, or we can allow the applicant to come forward again.
Correct.
I think that would be a terrific idea for us to do that, once we've got a little bit more clarity.
Counselor Seale?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've always just made a motion to approve, and then if you disapprove it, you vote no, it's a little bit easier. It's just something we've always done that way, Counselor Star, and it's probably easiest to, I mean, then no means no at that point. So we still have items thirty and thirty-two to consider tonight. They're on the agenda. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve items thirty and thirty-two.
Second, Jensen.
All right, so we have motion by Seale, seconded by Jensen, to approve those two items, thirty and thirty-two. Discussion on that. Counselor Knight, sir?
Same statement again, same section of state law, and I would just point out, and we'll all respectfully disagree, because this is a tough issue, so I completely honor that. But we were talking earlier, there was discussion about honoring our ordinance, but we're not just governed by ordinance, we're governed by state law. So regardless of whether our intent under ordinance was to allow connections between two, you still have to meet the definition of state law to be a bar or lounge, to be, to have video lottery with malt beverage or wine. And so if you can't pass that test, you're automatically, you should be disqualified, and so that's what I'm going to follow.
All right, other discussion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote to approve thirty and thirty-two, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
No.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
No.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, so that ends in a four-four tie, and for the reasons stated by Counselor Knight, sir, tie-breaking vote, and I'm going to vote no. So that item's going to fail five to four. Next item.
Item thirty-four, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 101, moved by amendment. Item thirty-six, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 102, moved by amendment. Item thirty-eight, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, 405 North Kewanas Avenue, Suite 103, moved by amendment.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer. Vikash Patel is the applicant for these items. If you have any questions for him or I.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on thirty-four, thirty-six, or thirty-eight? We've got the applicant coming up here. Counselors, do you have any questions for the applicant tonight?
My name is Vikash Patel. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I assume your answers would be the same as what they were last time, so we'll just, we'll take that as...
Sounds good.
Same thing.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, look for a motion here.
Move to approve items thirty-four and thirty-six.
Second, Star. All right, motion by McCorris, seconded by Star to approve thirty-four and thirty-six. Discussion on that?
Just to restate, my intention again is be in alignment with 2019. Intend to bring forward something forward next week that would allow them to come back forward and reapply after the clarification of the 2019 ordinance, if that clarification was approved.
All right. Other discussion, counsel? Counselor Knight, sir?
Same statement, basing denial on the non-compliance with forty-two, seven-eight, thirty-seven point one, specifically in forty-two, seven-eight, sixty-four, that the manner in which the place is operated.
All right, further discussion? All right, let's vote on the motion to approve thirty-four and thirty-six, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, that item passes six to two. Item thirty-eight, any discussion on that, or will I take a motion?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve thirty-eight. Any discussion there? Counselor Knight, sir?
Ditto from the last one.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
No.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Star?
No.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, that again is a split. I will be a no on the tie-breaking vote. That's going to fail five to four. Next items, forty, forty-two, forty-four, and forty-six, please.
Item forty, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anesia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 101, moved by amendment. Item forty-two, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anesia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 102, moved by amendment. Item forty-four, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anesia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 103, moved by amendment. Item forty-six, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Anesia LLC, 2409 West Russell Street, Suite 104, moved by amendment.
Jamie Palmer again, and the applicant for these items, again, is Vikash Patel.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant on this? Counselor Knight, sir?
Just stipulate the same answers to the same last two applications.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for our applicant here? All right, I look for a motion.
Move to approve items forty and forty-two. McCorris?
Second, Star.
All right, motion by McCorris, seconded by Star to approve forty and forty-two. Discussion there. Counselor Knight, sir?
Same reason for denial, same state citation. Thanks.
Okay, other discussion here? All right, let's vote on that motion to approve forty and forty-two.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, that one's going to pass, six to two. Items forty-four and forty-six now. Any motion to be made there?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale, and that's to approve forty-four and forty-six. Discussion there. All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
No.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
No.
Baranco?
No.
Cole?
No.
All right, that item fails, five to three. Did I count that right? Okay, that item fails five to three. Item forty-eight.
Item forty-eight is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Kingsmart, 4200 West 41st Street, moved by amendment.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer. For the last item, the applicant is Doc Wang, but I believe he's going to have Vikash Patel speak on his behalf.
Okay, thank you. First, yeah, anyone from the public who want to speak on this, you can come up. Mr. Patel, you speak on behalf of the applicant, or, okay, come on up, ma'am.
Okay, so we got an issue with that. If the applicant is here...
Just state your name, please.
...sorry, Sioux Falls. If the applicant's here and can understand the English language, then the applicant needs to come over here, and then Mr. Patel shouldn't be advocating for him or her.
All right, anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, council, you have a question for Jamie or for the applicant? Counselor Knight, sir?
Yeah, I do have a question for Vic, and I, having somebody represent you is perfectly acceptable. So we talked about this a little bit, but we need to just have it on the record. Can you just tell us a little bit of how they're going to operate and what it's going to look like?
So basically, Kingsmart is located at 4200 West 41st Street. The layout of the C storage stuff, as you enter the door, walk in a few steps, there is a counter where you pay for any of the goods that you're buying at the station. To, if you're facing the counter to the right, about ten feet, we're creating a separate room that has a complete enclosure and separation for the video lottery.
Thank you. Other questions for this applicant, who, Mr. Patel speaking on behalf of Counselor Knight, sir?
I'm sorry, just as a follow-up, had they decided, and they were going to use video surveillance and monitor it that way?
Yes, so, yes, so the videos, there will be two ways they'll be noticing it. It's within the visual sightline where the entrance door is, as well as there's a video surveillance setup, both in their backroom office, as well as by the front desk, which is a counter, that they're able to see everything.
And there'll be a cooler for beer inside?
There's going to be a cooler that's going to be inside, and beverages would be for sale at a price. They're not giving away.
They will, they will be sold.
Yes.
Do you know how much, and then most of the space is video lottery, but we don't know the composition of what, how much, obviously, how much alcohol sales versus video lottery revenue?
We don't know that.
Because it's not operational yet?
It will hold, it will hold a display-sized cooler there, and it'll be locked, and then whenever we need services, we'll open it and sell the bottle of beer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Mr. Patel here, on behalf of the applicant? All right, look for a motion here.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve forty-eight. Any discussion on this one? Counselor Knight, sir?
This one is a closer call, but I'm going to stick with my reasoning, based on my knowledge and assumption that it likely will not meet the requirement of a bar or lounge, and I could also tag on to that. There's also a clause in forty-two, seven-eight, sixty-four, just regarding the number of establishments currently located in the city. So I'll use those as my reasoning.
All right, any other discussion on this? Okay, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass, seven to one. Next item, forty-nine.
Item forty-nine is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 600 North La Mesa Drive, from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District, number seventeen, one seven oh one six, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Nielsen Construction, Kelly Nielsen.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber representing Planning Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Kelly Nielsen. It's located at 600 North La Mesa Drive. It's about 1.05 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to keep the existing drainage on the north side of this property, and then construct a five-unit townhome building on that south portion.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Council, you have any questions for Mr. Bieber here tonight? Counselor Knight, sir?
It's probably still a ways off, but this section of La Mesa is, well, really, all of La Mesa, is a rural section. As these developments are happening, I assume that, and this is not going to drive enough, but, and with Jefferson and stuff, they continue to look, I suppose, when it's going to need to be urbanized?
I don't believe we have it in the capital improvement plan, but that would be, you are correct. Once traffic increases on that, then they'll have to go to a full section, instead of a rural section, as you kind of see as it goes up there. But there is some development happening north of this, so that might be speeded up a little bit faster than what we anticipated, so.
Yeah, I know it's not in the five-year plan, but it could get there. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, look for a motion here.
Move approval, Knight, sir?
Second.
Motion by Knight, sir, seconded by Baranco. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 7505 South Minnesota Avenue, from the AG Agricultural District to the C3 Commercial Community District, number seventeen seventy-two, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Willitsen Lund Engineering, Eric Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is Michael Schulte. It's located just north of West 85th Street and west of South Minnesota Avenue. It's about 2.3 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to prepare the site for some commercial development along South Minnesota Avenue.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Questions, counsel, on this item? All right, look for a motion here.
So move, Cole.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Cole, seconded by Jensen to approve fifty. Discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1320 and 1324 East Pearl Street, from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Townhome Residential Traditional District, number one seven one two nine, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Pablo Alexis Lozano.
The applicant owner here is Pablo Lozano. It's located at 1320 and 1324 East Pearl Street. It's about 0.14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking to match the correct zoning with the current use of the property, as it's been a two-unit converted house for some time.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Questions here, counsel?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Cole.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Cole. Discussion, counsel? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-two is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 514 and 516 North Nesmith Avenue, from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Townhome Residential Traditional District, number seventeen one forty-eight, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Phil Punnens.
The applicant owner here is Phil Punnens. It's located at 514 and 516 North Nesmith Avenue. It's 0.14 acres in size, and a similar request to the previous one, is we're getting the correct zoning with the current use of the property, that it's been a two-unit converted house for some time.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on fifty-two? Questions here, counsel?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Baranco to approve fifty-two. Discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item?
Item fifty-three is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at twenty-six-hundred West Fifty-seventh Street from the O Office District to the C and Conservation and RA-three Apartment Residential High Density District number seventeen-one-sixty-four twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, DGR Engineering, Jesse Morris.
The applicant here is Jesse Morris. The owner is Joel Dykstra. It's located at twenty-six-hundred West Fifty-seventh Street. This is on Fifty-seventh Street, just west of I-two-two-nine. It's about seven-point-eight-four acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to develop a high-density apartment residential development on this property. At first reading, some traffic questions came up. The city staff has met with the applicant to give them some future traffic implications on Fifty-seventh Street. Eventually, we do project that Fifty-seventh Street will have a median down the middle of it, as you can kind of see with this aerial here, that the access point to the south doesn't quite line up with this one. So, the future will probably have a median and be a right-in, right-out, or possibly a three-quarter access. And then, originally, when this development was planned and built, the west half of it was built in twenty-sixteen. Traffic study was completed, and the proposed use that the applicant is rezoning it to actually generates less traffic than what was originally proposed. So, traffic engineering is fine with the proposed use here.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Slattery, owner of JJ's Wine Spirits and Cigars at three-thousand West Fifty-seventh Street. I have a little thing written up here, so I'm just going to plow through it. My wife and I, Jean, we own JJ's. We have JJ's axes and ales at the Bridgeview Crossing Development at three-thousand and three-thousand-and-sixteen West Fifty-seventh Street. We have been in operation at this location for about four-and-a-half years. We're also partners in Copenhagen Real Estate Holdings, the partnership that owns the buildings that we occupy. So, not only do we have a vested interest in our property from a retail perspective, but also from an equity perspective. Bridgeview Crossing does not exist if we had decided not... If we had not decided to build JJ's on this site that sat empty and forgotten for over a decade. A lot of folks were part of the process in getting this done, and we are thankful for those folks, but none of it happens if we didn't act first and say, "This is where we want to build our place." There were many discussions leading up to the final decision to build on this property. We did our due diligence, and our developer partners obtained proper zoning based on the long-term growth strategy that we laid out as a business and also as a long-term growth perspective as a development. At no time during those conversations was there any discussion of high-density apartments being part of the equation. What is the problem with high-density apartments? Absolutely nothing. If placed in an area that is properly zoned and is configured with this type of housing... It is configured with this type of housing in mind. Street parking, walkable shopping areas, walkable schools, walkable bus routes, access points and curb cuts that can handle the increased volume of traffic that comes with high-density apartments, and we'll focus on that for a second. So far, the proposed solution, as was indicated, to fixing the access to the property at Sink Place, if conjoined with a complex of high-density apartment buildings, is to place a median along Fifty-seventh Street, no longer allowing left turns in or left turns out of our only access point, which is Sink Place. Now, some of you, if not all of you, have been to JJ's at some point. I would like you to imagine what it will be like to attract retail traffic to our island, as we like to call it, when left-turn access is no longer available. This is the only solution that has been proposed to mitigate the increased traffic that will come with high-density apartment buildings, and I could seriously go on with ideas of what we could do to mitigate traffic in that solution, but a median is not the answer. We feel that the best solution is to stick to the plan and leave the land... This land zoned for office buildings, which would provide the level of synergy we need for continued post-pandemic recovery and growth, and we're also assured of when we agree to build JJ's and put everything we have into making it a place for fun, community gathering, monumental moments, charitable work, employment, and personal financial growth and security. All of this in question if high-density apartments are the answer to the adjacent property. Without further diving into the question... The questions that I and others here have raised, and that's it. Thanks for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Tom. Anyone else here to speak on item fifty-three tonight? All right, counsel, questions for Jason on this? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. Do you know if the parking that's being shown here, if it's meeting requirements or if it's exceeding requirements?
As working with the applicant on this concept plan, it's right at the requirements. They've also inquired about some bus pass reductions. However, with the location of the bus stops here, that's probably not a viable option unless we would move the bus stop onto the north side of the street instead of the south side. Just a little history on this property. Before JJ's was constructed, it actually was zoned live-work, so it was zoned for apartments or office uses. Before JJ's and that commercial development, they zoned it to office to essentially... Otherwise, they would have to provide a pretty large buffer yard there with the old way we did it. So, typically, it was zoned for apartments, not quite the MD-three form, but it would allow those MD-two, three-story, forty-eight units prior to it.
So, one thing... And parking requirements are really problematic in every city, and they're excessive here as well, particularly in commercial. We should address it. But it might be a little bit more right-sized with apartments, but I do wonder with, like, something like this, it's going to be an income, a qualified apartment. It would be interesting to look at some of those and see, do they have... You know, maybe they have less cars. Do they need this much parking? And maybe do a little bit of an analysis of that, and if so, maybe you could get a break on the parking if you... In a case like this, so if that's, you know, something to look at for the future, would be whether or not there's too much...
Yeah, great question. You know, we've toyed with that idea. That's kind of the new standard moving forward, that less parking instead of more parking. To be honest with you, typically, what we've seen at some of the conferences we've attended, Sioux Falls actually has lower parking standards than some of the other cities within the Midwest. But however, most of our developers, their model is two spaces per unit, no matter if it's one, two, or three bedrooms. So, trying to get that parking down is going to be a challenge, but obviously, that's something that us as a planning staff has looked into because that's kind of the new trend as you go forward, less parking than more parking, so.
And for an affordable... And every dollar counts. So, if they have to overbuild parking, we don't want them to have to do that. So, just keep that in mind. Sidewalks, there's not a ton of... You know, and it's arterial, so unless they have access outside of... Off the quarter-mile, the city would have to install the sidewalk. Is there any discussion? I don't remember where the sidewalk ends, but it's somewhere to the west of here, I think.
The applicant's showing, if you look at this drawing, and that's one of our comments to him, too, obviously, when you have a little bit of affordable housing project, even though the bus stop's a little ways away, you do want to provide that sidewalk. So, they are looking to provide sidewalks, as you can see they're on to. I think it's Sink Place, and then down to Fifty-seventh Street would be the place to do it.
So, but they would have to go to Sink Place, and then they'd have to traverse the... It's... So, I mean, that's not optimal, but...
No, it's not unless you can find a viable option through the west neighboring property. That could be a possibility, too.
Well, again, on the fringe on Fifty-seventh, it's arterial, so we'd be responsible unless... I don't know if that access point is off a quarter-mile, and JJ's would be responsible, but normally, we would have to build the sidewalk. You know, get them to a bus stop?
On Fifty-seventh Street, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Last question. One of the things, particularly for people that have... You know, that might live in housing like this, the bike trail's an effective transportation corridor. I think there's a little access thing that comes down by JJ's already, maybe, like a pay-of thing, but it might be interesting to look and see if you could potentially allow or do something where you'd have a direct blacktop thing going from their thing right into the bike trail, and then give them direct access to the bike trail, not just for leisure, but there's some that might even ride their bike to work. That could be an effective...
And the applicant has been working with parks on that. That's another comment that we brought up with any kind of an apartment complex here. You have unique ability to be right on the trail. If you can take advantage of it, that's something we'd like to work with them on and be able to have them directly access the bike trail.
Great. Thanks for thinking about that.
Other questions for Jason on this item here? Counselor McCurus, then Counselor Baranco.
Can you just clarify for me? Mentioned the median on Fifty-seventh Street. Must have heard wrong. I was understanding the median on Fifty-seventh Street is happening whether this project moves forward or not, or was the median a result of this project?
No. And just to clarify, I'm talking to median on here quite a ways out. You know, I think our traffic engineer said ten, twenty. I mean, it's going to be a ways out, but typically, there'd be a median on here, no matter if it's an apartment complex or office, or it could go to... If it went to commercial, just because of the traffic generations and the fact that it doesn't line up with that access on the south side. So, you can't really put a stoplight there. So, a median would happen here, no matter what was going to be developed in this particular parcel.
And the second question I have, you might not know the answer to, but the gentleman mentioned that he was assured when his project happened. Was he assured by the developer, or was he assured by the city that the zoning of that was going to be the office?
Like I indicated, it wouldn't have been the city because it was zoned live-work when he built his... He constructed JJ's, and then they zoned out of it, like I indicated, to prevent having to do a buffer yard as if there was a twin home there. So, it was zoned live-work, as this portion was zoned commercial, and then the other portion was zoned live-work when the development happened in twenty-sixteen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Baranco?
Yes, I've had the opportunity to go out and take a look at this. I think it's a wonderful piece of property. I'm excited for it to be developed, and I think it'll be a great asset to the city. I could see it being incredibly set... A perfect setup for some great offices, some restaurants, but I understand we do have a need for housing in the city as well. Where you're losing me is I cannot see how this is not going to create a significant traffic problem. And I understand that I am not a civil engineer. I try not to play one on TV, but I'm going to need some more information about how that's possible because when I take a look at it, I really see that we're buying a big traffic problem. And one thing I would like to put forward to my fellows on the council is that I'm not comfortable voting for this today because I haven't heard enough information about how this won't impact negatively the traffic situation that is already a pretty heavy traffic density area. So, one thing I'm going to suggest is that we give it another week and get some more information from traffic about how... It wouldn't be the first time in the world I've been wrong, but that does not add up to me personally.
And I just want to say, I think the applicant, Jesse, had submitted something to the city today. I don't know if he wants to add anything with the traffic aspects.
Jesse Morris, DGR Engineering. So, we... In twenty-sixteen, when we originally did the subdivision of this land, we did a traffic impact study. This portion that we're rezoning now was a thirty-two-thousand-square-foot, two-story office building and a sixteen-thousand-square-foot, one-story office building. So, we used some trip generation information based on published standards to figure out what that total daily impact is for traffic. We look at the total trip generation. We look at the peaks in the AM, and we look at the peaks in the PM. When you factor that initial zoning at that point in time with that proposed use, and then you factor in a hundred-and-forty-four apartment complex, use the same tables to develop the trip generation based on that information, your actual total daily trips is about ten percent less than what it was originally proposed, just because of the amount of traffic that's coming in and out of those facilities on a daily basis. And we... So, we presented a memo to the city comparing the existing traffic information from the original subdivision with the current traffic information with the proposed zoning. When we had the conversation on the, you know, on the impact of this rezoning, the conversation was that, you know, if we're not increasing the traffic, the city agreed with us based on our findings using the information provided. And then, at that point, they indicated that, you know, in the future, at some point, to Sink Place, there will be a median or something done there. That won't be a pet project that happens as a result of this rezoning. It'll be something that happens when Fifty-seventh Street is up for reconstruction in the future, which could be twenty years from now, and at that point, the city would obviously try to follow their standards and guidelines for major arterial where they put medians in all arterial streets.
Well, I appreciate your hard work. I'm going to probably need some more time to end some more information before I can understand how that's not going to create a traffic nightmare. But I appreciate your hard work and that you're looking hard at the situation, and it's probably my slowness that's just requiring me some extra time on this.
Thank you. We've put a lot of effort into... We've met with city staff multiple times on the traffic side to help make sure that everyone understands what we're doing. We've met with the owner of JJ's onsite. We met with them through a Teams meeting. The developer introduced himself, kind of gave them an idea of what they were trying to do on this rezoning. So, we've put a lot of effort into the front end to make sure that we've covered all our bases here for this rezoning. We're prepared for the questions that come up.
Counselor Selberg?
So, yeah, my follow-up would be, so you're... After all that, you're saying you're comfortable with these traffic numbers and everything were coming down?
Yep. Yep, we've presented the information to city engineering and traffic staff. We had a follow-up meeting late last week on that. Since then, we've provided some additional information. They requested and submitted a memo today that shows that the facts and findings of that based on the... And everything we're looking at is we're comparing the original access permit and traffic impact study that was done in twenty-sixteen for the subdivision. We're comparing that to... We're taking this office piece and plugging in residential and looking at that total impact, which indicates about a ten percent less total daily trips with this rezoning at Sink Place.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's interesting, because, I mean, every time we look at apartments and these type of things, traffic's always a big concern in the neighborhood. Generally, whoever it might be is always concerned about the numbers, and usually, it seems to fit in and work, but this one does look a little... I can see where Counselor Baranco, what he's saying, too, when you look at it, you're kind of scratching your head a little bit, but that's why it's great to hear a detailed explanation like you just gave, so, thank you.
Well, and it's a... There's a possibility... Excuse me. Mr. Chair, might I continue? There's a possibility, because, like I said, I have an open mind, and I like to learn about civil engineering and traffic flow. There's a possibility that it is less traffic than what was originally contemplated, but there's also a possibility that what was originally contemplated doesn't work for this situation either. And so, even if that's true, there's a chance, and I'm not saying that I know better, that either function, either design, might be a traffic problem, given the way that the city has grown since twenty-fifteen to where we are now. That's at least a possibility, and something I'd like to learn more about and explore more.
All right, other questions on this, or either applicant or anyone else? Counselor Knightzert?
Well, since Counselor Baranco brought it up, I think an important question for you, then, is your timing. If it got deferred a week, is that an issue? Does it... Do you have certain timelines you need to hit?
If it got deferred a week, we probably would be okay. I guess I'm just struggling to see what additional information we could provide to the city in additional... The meetings we've had and the information we've provided.
It may be that you've given all the information that's necessary to the city, but that would give me a week to get with my people with the city and have them, with their greater expertise, clarify for me how that works. That's at least a possibility.
Other questions?
If I could, for Mr. Morris. I guess that's in more of a question. I know there was a different outlook, but when I look at this development, I almost think office makes sense because it's a commercial district. There isn't a place for kids to go to school where the nearest school is. When you start looking for... You know, we've spent a lot of time not only talking about housing, but also food deserts and the ability to get to get groceries for people, because I think this is planned for a sixty-percent AMI development.
It's part of the tax-dated program, yes.
And so, again, transportation's a big deal. Not having the bus on that side of the street, again, we can fix that in the... That's one of the things that potentially we could fix. We can always fix transit in this city. We're so far behind in a lot of ways to make transit work. But again, an office in this commercial area makes more sense because it spreads out the weekday versus weekend traffic that some of the other commercial development in the area is. There's... Yes, there is a lot of multifamily already in the area, but primarily through this area, it's office buildings, it's medical, and just making that commercial side of what's happening. This site just seems to be appropriately zoned for office.
Just real quick on that, Councilmember Starr. So, typically, with multifamily residential, one of the reasons why we look for mixed-use development to decrease parking standards is typically the commercial and office are going to be eight to five, right? So, if you're putting all office in here, all the traffic is eight to five here, right? You're putting multifamily on half of it. Most of your traffic is going to be at eight, right, because people are going to go to work, and then after five for the apartment aspect of it. So, typically, that's why we're looking for mixed use, is because you can share parking. So, I guess I would argue that this would be less strain on the existing Sink Place and Fifty-seventh Street because we'd be spreading out the traffic in a longer period of time.
My other question than Jason, as long as we're here with this. Shannon from Engineering had a whole different outlook... Shannon from engineering had a whole different outlook on the traffic of this and I'd sure like to hear from her again because last week she was saying that we didn't, or a couple of weeks ago, didn't have a traffic impact study. We just got information that updated concerns for traffic this morning. So I agree with Counselor Bronco that I, I think there's still some discussion because I'd sure like to see, she was mentioning the number of traffic accidents and T-bone type accidents that are happening that are coming from the other side of the street as people leave that area and try to go back to the west and then adding additional people. Because one of the places, when people get off the interstate and get on 57th and start heading west, it's the speedway starts going on and trying to get in and out with the way some of these are there. I, I'm uncomfortable with the amount of traffic that we're going to add and, and trying to make this work. And so if he does make that motion, I'm going to be supportive just because I'd sure like to have Shannon come back and explain that they're on board with this.
Move to defer item number 53 to November 8th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to defer to November 8th, this item by McCurris, seconded by Counsel Jensen. Discussion on the motion to defer, Counsel Sale. Do you want to unpack it first, Counsel McCurris?
I am supportive of this project. I have no objections to allowing for another week to get clarified information from the city. Since this is the first time we've had this level of discussion on the item, I don't believe there's harm done by waiting one week.
Counsel Sale.
I agree. And just for the council's awareness, next week at our informational, we have traffic engineering come. So get your questions together and get them emailed in and we'll take a whole look at this traffic along with stoplight at 33rd and Minnesota, which is extremely long in my opinion.
Where do you live again? By 33rd and Minnesota? All right, other questions on the motion to defer or discussion, I should say? All right, I'm hearing none, so let's take a vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that's going to be deferred to the 8th. That passes, eight to zero. Next item.
Item 54 is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of South Daylight Drive and east of South Highland Avenue from the O Office District to the LW Live Work District, number 171652022. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, GND Har Construction LLC, Gary Har.
The applicant and owner here is Gary Har. It's located south of East 26th Street and west of South Veterans Parkway. It's about 1.86 acres in size. The purpose of this development is the developer would like a little bit more flexibility for the option to do offices or some fourplexes along that stretch.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on 54? Questions here, council? All right, look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. A discussion there. All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 55 is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of West Maple Street and east of North La Mesa Drive from the AG Agricultural District to the CN Conservation RS Single Family Residential Suburban in I-1 Light Industrial Districts, number 171622022. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the planning commission recommends approval six to zero with the following conditions. The 19-acre zoned I-1 Light Industrial is limited to the WM-1 form. Within the WM form, only manufacturing light land use is allowed for the construction of the single-family homes that are going to be placed within the Harvest Hills subdivision. Private applicants, Jefferson Hills Development LLC, Alan Gordon.
The applicant and owner here is Alan Gordon. It's located at the southeast corner of North La Mesa Drive and West Maple Street. It's about 307 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is for the development of a single-family residential neighborhood. And then you can see the small industrial site in the southwest corner. The applicant is proposing to use that industrial site to actually construct a manufacturing warehouse slash building to actually construct the houses for the subdivision onsite. As you heard, Tamara did read the condition that staff and planning commission and the applicant is agreeable to, to once that industrial area is done being, being used to construct these single-family houses, we would like that to be rezoned to something other because industrial next to single-family obviously isn't very compatible. But this would prevent them from utilizing it for something else other than constructing those single-family homes within that subdivision.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on 55 tonight? Questions here, council? Mr. Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
Yeah, so if I remember right, La Mesa turns into, I think gravel at Maple, north of Maple, I want to say. And I think that section of Benson also is gravel. So what's going to be improved and what are access is going to look like?
I believe Benson's paved there. As they continue to, to do this, there's going to start in the southeast corner. Once additional access points happen to La Mesa, once they get to that point where they're going to have to utilize that, then it will have to be upgraded to a roll section, which they can do it as part of their project if it's ahead of us, similar to what Brady High did over on 41st and Six Mile Road. Or if it's slower than anticipated, that we, the city may be out there or that might be in our capital improvement plan at some point.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this, Counsel Starr?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Other questions here?
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Any discussion there? Counsel, or, excuse me, Counsel Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't tell you how excited I am to see this go forward. It's a new concept for us here and I'm, personally, I'm looking forward to the concept of assembly line houses coming in one side, a new house coming out the other in, inside of a day. That's something that we need new innovative thinking for our housing problems that we have in Sioux Falls. So I'm really looking forward to see this go forward.
Thank you, council. Any other discussion on the motion here? All right, let's vote on it.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 60 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Harvest Hills Edition 169152022. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, JSA Engineers, Pat Schwebach, move by amendment.
The applicant and owner here is Alan Gordon. This is the same project that we just heard about. This would be the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with that. And as indicated before, it's 307 acres for single-family residential development.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on 60? Questions here, council? Mr. Counsel Nitzer?
Sorry to jump in again. Just one other commentary in not only just accelerating the housing, but it's also emerging in really great location. I mean, you're going to be across the street from a middle school. I think an elementary school is looking to go in there. Jefferson High School is right down the road and you have exploding commercial, so it'll be really convenient to a lot of various services and stuff out there, so that's great.
Counsel Starr?
Yes, just to follow up on that, I know the schools are there. What about the parks? How does this fit into parks within the area? I mean, this is a large area to, the, the city is a part of our master planning or through the parks?
Yep, we have a park scheduled south of McGovern Middle School there. We have some land, so typically the city has been partnering with schools, so that'll be a park on that side. And then I do believe, you know, as we continue, as the northwest side of the city continues to accelerate very fast, as part of the whole city team, we're looking for probably some additional areas to, to maybe start to purchase for some facilities up there, so.
And we budgeted those millions to buy land for those type of things, so.
Yes, we, yeah, we did, yeah.
Never have enough money.
Other questions here?
Move approval, Sale.
Second.
Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Any discussion there? Let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item.
56 is a, 56 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota approving a lease of city real property. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Ted Lewis. I'm here representing the Public Works Water Division. This is a, a project with the Minnehaha County Conservation District, which the district would not pay any rent for this land and in exchange, they will be providing a, a garden and demonstration area for education to the general public. And they will be responsible for all costs and they indemnify the city for all liability. I ask for your support in this land lease.
All right, thanks, Ted. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, you got any questions for Ted here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Bronco. It's a set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 8th on this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 57 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 41 fees, section 41.008, public facility ticket fees. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Sean.
Good evening. We covered this in, in a lot of detail here this afternoon, so I'm going to keep this very brief. It's a first reading of a revision to our public facility ticket fees ordinance. It was last revised in 2015. There's two parts to it. We had a canary's fee that was separate due to some lease structuring that we had with the canaries at that time. And then all other tickets could be up to $3. This primarily relates to our entertainment venues here in the city and it stipulated that the funds are remitted to the city unless otherwise stipulated within the management agreement. And it's been our current practice that they've stayed with our management entities to help support operations and maintenance of those facilities. So the recommend, recommendation that we're bringing forward eliminates the canary's fee to the extent that with the next item on the agenda, this lease credit of a portion of the public facility fees as part of the lease payment would be removed as part of revising their lease. We do increase it up to $5 a ticket and just for public's awareness, this would be limited in terms of its application because it's really only related to a select number of events that might happen at the premier center that supports the side, a $5 fee relative to what was previously $3. And as we discussed today, we have much reduced fees when it comes to other events, ongoing type of things like stampede in the storm and it's certainly sensitive to the price sensitivity of people and making sure that we have accessible entertainment options in our community. So that wouldn't change for many of those current public fees that are being charged. It does provide more specificity in stating that the actual, actual facilities that this is related to. And as we talked about today, a portion of the fees is proposed to be directed to the Sioux Falls Sports Authority who has a very strong connection with our premier center and has been really important in helping us program that, develop events that have had high impact for our community, over 300,000 attendees relative to the, the Summit Conference Tournament, which the Sports Authority was active in bringing forward in addition to NCAA events and has generated $6 million in gross revenues, $2 million to the net revenue side of our premier center. So they've been an important partner to us. We had a good discussion here today on a couple of the topics that will be good to give some reflection to as we look to second reading for next week and some of the things that were brought forward. The one thing I will say is, you know, this is very much, the, the way we can support the Sports Authority is, is not indifferent to how we support our bid and our experience laws or how we support the Main Street bid. And it's one of the reasons why it's kind of brought forward in ordinance through the public facility fees because of the nexus that's created between the work that the Sports Authority does and the, the revenue that's generated at that facility provides some long-term stability to the organization, long-term support because much of what they do takes years to breach fruition and it's not indifferent to what we do with Main Street Sioux Falls as well as the lodging and experienced Sioux Falls. So we'll be taking a look at it a little bit further, but reflecting on some of the comments made as we come back into second reading for next week. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Mr. Pritchett here? Counsel Bronco?
As we talked about it before, really want to thank you again for entertaining our conversation and finding a way to get this important mission accomplished, but making sure that we shift that burden onto the, you know, wine and cheese crowd, not so much the coke and popcorn crowd. Families need to be able to get the entertainment that they can afford. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and we'll, I believe Counselor McCurris's request, we'll have a little bit of data to show you kind of what's being charged on certain events, so you can reflect upon that on second reading next week.
All right, any other questions for Sean? Counsel McCurris, then Counsel Starr?
One clarif, sorry, one clarified question, Director. This afternoon when we had the director of the management company with us, they had expressed support in saying that their revenue was going to increase as a result of this. I was understanding before that really the revenue, that the extra revenue that's going to be created by this is going to the Sports Authority. How was their revenue increased? Help me just understand that a little more.
Well, from a technicality, if you, if it runs through them, their revenue increases, but it would also be a pass-through expense potentially as well. And so it kind of net-net, unless they achieve higher than the amount that we're proposing to bring forward to the Sports Authority. So I think maybe some clarity, there needed to be some clarification on that comment, but.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Starr?
Yes, just more of a comment. Could you also include the pavilions data as well? Because we see, especially between the pavilion and the orpheum, because we see a lot more family-type shows or when we're in the rental business, basically, you know, whether it's a dance program or a kid's dance program and how that affects. So I think we would see more differences how this moves rather than, than what we would see at the premier center.
Sure.
Just more data.
Other questions for Sean here? All right, see, none. I look for a motion, that'd be to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November 8th.
So move, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That's going to pass eight to zero. Next item.
Item 58 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota authorizing the mayor to enter
depth, so I'm going to keep this brief, um, because we covered much of this information, but just quick overview. We have a current lease uh, with the Canaries. Uh, it dates back to nineteen ninety-nine. We're in year twenty-three of that lease. They had, uh, essentially, it's a thirty-year lease to in total. They have two five-year extensions, which they can execute at their option. It was executed uh, three years ago by the prior owners, and it continues to the date. Uh, and then just provide some uh, use of that facility. It, the uh, main reasons for updating, well, there's a number of reasons, but it's a very out-of-date agreement. It needed to incorporate many things that protect us, but also facilitate the nature of our relationship between ASM Global, the Sioux Falls Canaries, as well as the city of Sioux Falls, um, and reflecting how that's changed since where we were twenty-three years ago. Again, I I covered this pretty much in-depth earlier today, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have um, in regard to some of those. I think the biggest pieces to note is that we are reducing the lease payment fro- to one dollar. Uh, however, we are shifting more expenses through the lease to the Canaries as are appropriate in their use of the facility. They do receive full use of the facility during the year, but I will point out that the city has uh, the option at rent-free to five dates, and then ASM Global, based on availability, would have the option to program certain dates if they requested and if they are open. That's not something we've been doing recently, but it does maintain that preference or that option in the in the future. And then lastly, uh, just recognizing with the reduction of the lease, um, the, part of the basis is the fact that we're not putting a lot of improvements into the field, not knowing the future use of that field, whether it will be relocated, what will happen with that campus. Um, but the Canaries have made significant contributions uh, from their uh, resources to improve the field, whether it's a new scoreboard, turf infield, improved seating behind home plate, front office improvements, food and concessions improvements. So those well over a million uh, dollars that have been put into the field, uh, based on their personal resources. Uh, and this reflects that. We continue to be uh, really focused on our improvements related to health and safety improvements for the facility, um, and then keeping through the uh, remainder of the lease, which still is seven more years, so it's the same as the original lease. And with that, I guess I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
All right, thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to item fifty-eight? Counsel, you got any questions for Sean on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes, I, you know, I've thought about this since this afternoon. We've really made a concerted effort over at least the last five or six years not to put any more money into the stadium until we have a plan, but by dropping the lease payment from sixty thousand a year to zero, we've essentially are putting sixty thousand into the, you know, so they continue to invest in a, you know, enough to to keep the thing afloat until we decide what to do. But so technically, we're still investing in the field at at a lot lower rate.
Um, one could make the case, but if you look at some of the data and the expenses that we were paying, you're talking about twenty or thirty thousand dollars of expenses that we were paying out of pocket that shift. We also have about the five, that's six thousand dollars a year of those lease credits from the public facility fees that we were reducing that as well. You can add that on top of it. Um, if we did make a small adjustment in the public facility fee, you'd probably generate about another twenty thousand dollars in additional fees. So we're actually getting closer to that break-even point overall.
But ultimately, to replace a baseball stadium, depending on how you do it, you're in that twenty to twenty-five million anyway, so we need to start saving some nickels everywhere we can by the time we're done to get to a number like that, or at least plan for the long-term leasing, and maybe we throw it in with the swimming pools.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Sean here? Counselor Baranco?
Just wanted to say thank you for for your hard work on this. I'm I'm really impressed how uh, well you've been interfacing with the Canaries and working out something to to, I I know nothing's perfect. I recognize those points, but one of the great virtues of what you worked out here is that it's simplified. It's easier to understand. It's going to take less, you know, analyst hours to figure out where the money goes and who's on what end of what payment, and so that's a benefit to everyone. I appreciate that.
And it protects the city better than our former lease did.
I think so.
It protects the Canaries, and it really defines whose roles and responsibilities are relative to the management of that stadium.
I agree.
Other questions here for Sean? I look for a motion, then that'd be to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, November eighth?
So move, Sale.
Second.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Baranco. Discussion on that. Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Starr, I would remember also when we had the discussion about putting any more money into a failing stadium, and the roof was leaking, and we bit the bullet, and we made that happen. I will say since that time, there's been a change of ownership out of the Canaries, and they've made a significant investment in our facility, and I greatly appreciate that, and I greatly appreciate Sean Pritchard and the legal staff looking to update his contract so we have something better to work on. So let's just hope now that the World Series is on, people pay attention and buy their Canary season tickets, so that can become a revenue generator for us.
All right, thank you, sir. Other discussion on the motion? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-nine is a resolution of intent to enter into a lease and/or offer for sale municipal real property. Sponsor is the mayor.
Dustin, good evening.
Good evening, council, mayor, Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Uh, so tonight's item is a resolution of intent for the city to contemplate either a lease and/or a sale of all or a portion of the city-owned property located at one forty East Tenth Street, which is our newest parking structure that we have in downtown Sioux Falls. As we've discussed over the last several months, uh, we wanted to bring a resolution forward that really outlined the goals and expectations of the city council before we begin soliciting proposals for the site. Uh, so tonight's resolution uh, shares uh, some of those comments, uh, so that we are open to either a lease and/or sale of all or a portion of the property. Uh, lays out those goals and expectations that we've talked about at the previous uh, informational meetings over the last couple of months, which were that uh, this is a build-ready site. Uh, there are many of the obstacles of development have already been accomplished and addressed, so we want to maximize the city's investment into this property. We want to partner with a team that has experience with downtown development, uh, or high-rise construction. Uh, we want to leverage uh, the existing uh, sites and parking to create density and activity within the area. We want to target a mix of uses for this property, but we do want to understand what the market's going to be able to bear for downtown and and be flexible with that. Uh, we want to activate Tenth Street. Uh, how do we bridge the gap between the intersection of Tenth and Phillips, our River Greenway, and the East Bank? Uh, we want a uh, a project that uses quality materials and design. Obviously, the city and the investment in our parking garage there used quality materials and design, and so we want to leverage that to uh, protect the city's investment. And we ultimately want this to align with the downtown planning efforts of the city. Uh, the resolution also indicates that we'll be using the negotiated sale process to solicit proposals for this, and we discussed that at the October eleventh informational meeting. Uh, pending approval of tonight's resolution, we are prepared to uh, release this on the city's website uh, as a listing of the negotiated sale process next Monday. Um, what that will entail is a a public announcement of the development opportunity, and ultimately, the website that will be uh, posted uh, as part of the process will have details of the property, which we've detailed uh, over the last several months, the goals and expectations that are outlined in this uh, resolution here tonight, and then all of the information that will be needed uh, for them to understand the process of submitting through the negotiated sale process. So again, this resolution, uh, the purpose of this is really to uh, share the council's expectations for this, so the development community is aware of what the expectations are for the proposals that they need to submit as part of this process. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Dustin, thank you. Uh, anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-nine tonight? Counsel, questions for Mr. Powers here? Look for a motion.
So move, second, Jensen.
All right, motion approved by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Discussion here, council? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Uh, next item.
Item sixty-one is a notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, new business, council. Do we have any to cover? Not seeing any, so we'll move on to public input on any topic we didn't talk about on our agenda tonight. Uh, so come on up if you're here for public input. Three minutes per person. Good evening.
Good evening, Chester DeYoung. I had the privilege of a meeting last Thursday, the twenty-seventh, with Assistant City Attorney Ms. Bullock. Uh, I got to admit, I've been dealing with this Grand Street issue since last May. It is the first time I have actually had a meeting with a city official where there wasn't bullying, intimidation, and lies. This was a very productive meeting. I'm very happy with the meeting. Consequently, uh, out of respect, I want to give her some time to figure things out. She had to figure some things out legal-wise. Uh, so at this point, thank you commissioners, uh, the mayor, the attorney, the city counts, administrators, uh, you guys have done a great job. You're really listening. Uh, I appreciate the time. The public appreciates the time that you put into this thing. Um, you're a great asset to the city. Um, with that, on the twenty-first of October, uh, the mayor jumped in and helped with the uh, food giveaway at the underprivileged soccer tournament going on in Sioux Falls. That was the second tournament they'd had, and with his help, the ladies at St. John's Lutheran, there's three of them, they served seven hundred meals to underprivileged kids. Uh, the meals were provided by Hy-Vee, and uh, we appreciate it, and I just wanted to give a thought, shout-out to the mayor for that, and I know that the Night Watch program really appreciates it. Uh, in the thirteen-year history of Night Watch, that is the most meals ever served out of that van at one time. In fact, it more than doubles it. So uh, it was great to see it happen. Thank you. Have a great night.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak tonight? Good evening.
Wow, Mr. Chester, what an accomplishment, right? See how much work can get done?
I like that. I like that, Chester.
Administration, wow. Lord have mercy, are they complaining? Lord, Sierra Bristow Sioux Falls. So, um, so Greg's wife, you know, sees my text, so what I'm I'm going to say is it's not offending his wife. So Greg Knight's birthday was yesterday, so he turned forty-four, and so I sent um, Greg Knight to the text and said, um, what makes you so young and 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 good-looking here at forty-four years old? And he said, clean living. And I said, oh, clean living. So Greg's birthday was yesterday at forty-four years old, and, you know, I com- uh, I kind of rattled him and said, well, um, does that mean that you look so good because you're a rubber stapper? We haven't heard that word in a while, and so he started chuckling laughing, so I had to bring up that word. But Greg Knight has been here for what, seven years, six years, seven years? Seven years. And um, went through a whole lot in this, um, time sitting on this bench from personal issues at home, from this council to the public, and to all the bashing and everything else, and the God's creation to the ethics uh, stuff, and then if I was in his shoes at forty-four, I would be looking like eighty-four years old. But it is what it is, and he's still standing strong here, and um, I think that uh, I wanted to come up here and tell him and tell the world that uh, Greg just turned forty-four yesterday. So, Mr. Chester, on the other hand, so I I'm glad that um, we're seeing the light of the tunnel here. You know, there was some legal legalities here and some stuff that the city has done years and years and years ago, before the youth administration, the Ten Hackett administration goes on and on and on. So I'm glad that they've started talks behind closed doors, and hopefully something will come out and transparent work out, so then we can have a neighbor, a meeting about some sidewalks for the people that have disabled and wheelchairs there. So gotta give it some time, but um, it's very um, good to hear a citizen that has um, has some toxicity go on with the city for a couple of years or whatnot, to come tonight. And now, this is what government and transpar- uh, transparency is all about. So everybody watching TV, it can't happen. Communication with 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 the administration can happen. So I encourage everybody else to do the same thing that I have told Mr. Chester and guided[1762.46]